Oh, good evening and welcome again, everyone. Thanks for being here. This is a public hearing for Burke Solar LLC. It's December 1st, 2022. We're here at the Burke Town Hall. And it is 6:02, and I'm going to call this me, a public hearing to order. Pursuant to and in accordance with general municipal law, section 859A, the County of Franklin Industrial Development Agency is conducting this public hearing in connection with a certain proposed project, as more fully described below, to be undertaken by the agency for the benefit of Burke Solar LLC. The agency published a notice of public hearing and delivered a copy of the notice of public hearing to each affected taxing tax jurisdiction. An affidavit of publication of and proof of delivery are attached. Burke Solar LLC itself and/or on behalf of an entity or has admitted an application to the agency requesting the agency's assistance with a certain project or projects consisting of, one, the acquisition by the agency of a leasehold interest in approximately nineteen, nineteen point nine five acres of real property located at state Route 11 in the town of Burke, Franklin County, New York. The land being more particularly described as a portion of tax parcel number fifty-nine dot dash four dash fourteen dot one hundred, as may be subdivided. Two, the planning, design, construction, and operation of a five megawatt AC solar electrical generation system, including panel foundations, inverters, transformers, interconnect wiring, utility connections, site work, landscaping, fencing, security, and related improvements. Three, the acquisition of and installation in and around the land and improvements by the company of machinery, equipment, fixtures, and other items of tangible personal property. And four, entering into a straight lease transaction within the meaning of subdivision fifteen of section eight fifty-four of the act, pursuant to which the agency will retain a leasehold interest in the facility for a period of time and sublease such interest in the facility back to the company. The agency contemplates that it will provide financial assistance for the company in the form of, A, an exemption from all state and local sales tax and use taxes with respect to the qualifying personal property included in or incorporated into the facility or used in the construction and equipping of the facility, and B, a partial real property tax abatement through a payment in lieu of tax agreement, pursuant to which the company would make payments in lieu of real property taxes to the agency for the benefit of each affected tax jurisdiction. As attached to this agenda will be the agency and I've passed that out to everybody in attendance, and that's really has the financial details of the proposed project and benefits that the IDA is considering to provide to Burke Solar LLC. So at this time, we are going to open this public hearing. Give the floor to anyone in the audience, person, and thank you for being here and or online and to provide any comment or ask any questions about the proposed benefits and the cost benefit analysis. I would ask, you can kind of see on the screen, Maria Bourgeois Bourgeois from the IDA is on the screen. She's taking minutes in transcripts, so maybe hard for her to see and hear. So if you have any questions, please just state your name till so she knows who's speaking for the purposes of the minutes.
Jeremy, um, this is Bill Wood, Burke Town's provider. For the benefit of everybody here and anyone who might be participating on the, on the web. Would you go over this and tell us? Number one, explain what you have here. Let us know where you come up with the, you know, the $5,500 pilot number. Just give us some background as to what you've got, what we're looking at.
So the proposed terms of this, of this payment project are identical to three, that the idea is approved in the last several years, and identical to two additional that are being that we are considering at the same time in the town of Fort Covington. As you can see from the bottom half of this table, the length, the proposed length of the pilot is fifteen years. The terms or how much the pilot payment would actually be is for a project like this is based on a cost per megawatt being generated by the project. This is a proposed five megawatt project, and the payment per megawatt is $5,500. In addition, so that's, that's at the kind of the first year. In addition, there is a two percent escalator built in, so that every year of the amount goes up per year through the life of the entire fifteen-year term. And let's see, the the chart, the column to look, look at in this proposed schedule that's the most valuable is the one that says total pilot payments, base value plus system. So you can see what that is, is that the
Do you want to explain what the base value is before we get too much farther?
Perfect. So the property today generates a certain amount in property taxes, which is this thirty-two hundred and sixty-one dollars.
That's town, county, and school.
Yeah, that's all, all property taxes together. Pilot payment never takes that away. It only builds it on top of it. So the underlying base taxable value of the property will always be there, and the pilot is added on to it. So that's why you've got the base value column, and then you've got the pilot payment column. You add those two together, and that's the total payment that's going to come to the IDA each year, and that goes up every year because of the two percent escalator. Once the IDA receives the payment, it then distributes it to each of the taxing jurisdictions based on the portion of the overall tax bill that that is based on the tax rate of each jurisdiction. So if you go to stage two of the analysis, you can see what that looks like. There's two charts here. The first one is using the pilot payment as, as how it would be distributed. The lower chart is if there was no pilot, what that would look like. It's, it's meant to, meant for the taxing jurisdictions to see the difference. But if we go back to the top one, you can see that the total payment, estimated payment, if it were to be, if it went online today, would be thirty thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars total. And then what we did is we took the current tax rates for each taxing jurisdiction and broke out how much each one would get. So the overall tax rate based on the 2022 roll for the town of Burke is six point four eight. And so if the payment came today, the town would receive seven thousand eight eighty-one dollars. The county's tax rate based on the current rolls, four point three, received forty-seven hundred dollars. And then the school district, based on the, it's in the middle of the 2022, 23 tax roll right now, would have seventeen point three, would get eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. So we like to include this because it's important for all the jurisdictions to remember that the total, the total pilot payment is one thing, but then how it's distributed, divided up and distributed is a different thing. So we like to give everybody an estimate of what that would look like. Please, please keep in mind that this is an estimate because the project is not real yet and has to be constructed, and when the pilot, if the pilot starts in 2024, these tax rates will have changed a little bit, but not a, not a ton as far as the percentage.
It changes every year.
It changes every year. So this is only just to give you a sense of it. It's not meant to be exact. The only thing that is, that, that is known is the actual pilot payment at twenty-seven thousand five hundred, and then that goes up two percent each year. So that's, that you know, but the distribution can change a little bit based on the different tax rates. And then again, like I said, the second chart that shows what things would look like if there were no, no pilot for comparison purposes.
That would be if we were, if they were paying a hundred percent.
Correct.
It would be if they were going to pay a hundred percent.
Correct.
Arnold Law Bill, what happens after year fifteen?
After fif- after year fifteen, the project goes back on the tax roll at a hundred percent, just like
So you go to the bottom half of the sheet to be the
Well, right, yes, but fifteen years from now, the tax rates will be different. The assessed value, the assessed value will be a lot different.
It shouldn't be less, so.
It won't be less, no, yeah, no. There will be two things fifteen years from now that's hard to predict, and Loretta just mentioned one. First of all, there's, there's, the, the assessor will have to value the improvements of, because right now it's vacant land. The project goes in, and it's, if, if there's a pilot, it's fully exempt. But obviously, there's a, a value that will be given to, the assessor will give to the improvements. But as Loretta pointed out, over time, that value, there's depreciated, depreciation that occurs. So it's hard to predict what the value, the overall assessed value of the property will be fifteen years from now. But whatever that is, is what it will be taxed at.
Is there a chance they try to get another pilot agreement or?
Always, yes, but from, from the industrial development agency's standpoint, our, our policy and, and the, you know, the state regulations are, we, we can provide pilots when there's measurable improvements to a property that provide substantive value to the community. And in lieu of some capital investment, there would be a, it would be hard for us to justify a new pilot. Does that make my, my describing that well?
That'd be a total upgrade to the whole project.
Right, that would be, that would be, if they came back and said, we need to refresh all the panels, they depreciated, or they become more efficient, and they're making a big, a really big investment, then that's certainly something that we could look at, but just coming and saying, we don't want to pay all the taxes is not a justification that the IDA can take.
Okay, you, you mentioned that you, you've got like three projects before this one, or maybe including this one, where you came up with the $5,500. So I'm curi-, where did that magic number come from? How, how do you derive it? And, 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 and moving forward, you know, because I guess my, where I'm going with this is there is a larger solar project coming in. Do you, do you use the same numbers for that, or do we, are we looking at a different animal and?
It's an entirely different model.
Right.
So back to your first question. Obviously, these, this is a, well, this is a community scale solar project, which means the electricity generated is sold in the open market to any home or business within the service area of the project, basically nice sag territory.
I was contacted by the deputy mayor of Cooperstown, who told me that they were trying to sell the property power to them.
Okay.
Which is what, four hours away from you?
And that, there's a, there's
I don't know if the electrons will go that far, but that's
A radical thing, but yes.
Okay.
But, but, so that, and that, having a community scale project comes with, and incentives that the company can get from the state come with different rules and regulations. And all of those things affect the, the price at which the company can sell the electricity. And the state has, over the last few years, given a range of what they think is an acceptable range for pilot payments per megawatt and by different service territories, and then we all watch each other. The companies watch, all the IDAs across the state watch, everyone's watching to see what seems to be reasonable for these types of projects. And we had settled on fifty-five hundred dollars megawatt with Oya Solar, which is the project in Constable, which was on the high end of the, of the range, and thought that it made sense to really push for that. And we, we've continued that because we think it's, it's fair. It's, it's certainly within at the high range of what projects are getting throughout the state. It may not be the highest. It's certainly above average. And we, we feel it's, it's pretty reasonable for these types of projects. To answer your second question, compared to a utility scale project, that, a solar project that might be contemplated, as you, as you said, they're different, completely different models. So we would, we would never take fifty-five hundred as a starting point for a project like that. That, that would be more of an in-depth analysis of the finances of that project and seeing what's reasonable. It's just a completely different, it's more, it's more akin to the wind projects. And so you have to look at each one individually and see what's best for the community.
So, so I, I see why, you know, you're bringing this to us tonight. I mean, you've shared it with me and Tim Pryor, and we, I gave it, I presented it to the board in a meeting. We had nothing to do with the numbers on it. It was something you all did, and, and I understand better now where the fifty-five hundred dollars came from. I'm, I'm looking to the future, once the, the Brookside project gets their permit from New York State approved, and they move forward. Are, will the three taxing entities be included right from the beginning in the negotiations for something like that? Or does the IDA take it over and come to us at a certain time and say, this is where we are, and is it acceptable?
There's a lot of, lot of, lot of people in that, right, that, a lot of variables. My hope, and I can speak for the board, the board of directors, is that we are all together, working together from the beginning on it, and, and coming up with, making sure we have something that is beneficial to the overall community and working in tandem to negotiate the best project possible with the company. That takes all of everybody going around the table at the beginning.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Well, and, and let me give you
There'll be two towns. Fortunately, you're on that one school district involved in that one.
And then the county.
And then the county.
Right. So here's another, here's another difference there is that because of the, within our policy, because of the scale of this project and the terms that have been identified, the, the board of directors can make the, approve the agreement.
Just for the small ones?
They can just, they, they have the authority to approve this. However, a project, and we're getting a little off track between the project today, but it's okay, we're all, we're all learning. A larger utility scale project would not fall into that category, and any pilot agreement would require that the IDA approves, would require the approval of each of the taxing jurisdictions. It's a big difference between a project like this.
So how, 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 what, what's your megawatt limit for what the IDA board can approve without the town?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Yep.
And under?
Yep.
Okay.
And there's also things like the twenty, a twenty-year term and things like that. Can't, if, if somebody came back and wanted a twenty-five-year term, that would need approval from all of the jurisdictions. This is under under that.
Actually, if you want to, true fifteen years is maybe too long, but.
These are hard, these are a long time to rest and think about, isn't it?
I have a question among Tim. If we have another project that we got started, is this going to be basically the same? Or do we get a different pilot agreement for our next project that we got?
If it were of a similar size? Yeah, if it were a similar size, our starting point would be this. Now, they could certainly come as far as how we would approach the start the negotiation.
Right.
But if, but if they said, we don't want to do that, well, let's talk about it, but you better provide some, some evidence for why you need something different.
That makes sense, yeah.
So we feel comfortable with the approach we've had going here for a while. If somebody came and said, well, we want twenty-five, or we want one thousand dollars per megawatt, we would say, well, you gotta, gotta give us some good reasoning for, for the board to consider that. And there are good reasons, but you just, you can't, we're not going to take it at face value.
Gentleman who just asked the question, was your name Tim?
Tim, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if, if there was someone here tonight that adamantly disagreed with this, what would happen? I mean, I, I know you've just told us that the board, your board can approve it irregardless, but if, if someone was here and adamantly disagreed with this, what would happen?
Well, the, it, it probably depends on what the disagreement was about. That's why we're taking a transcript and, and, and minutes for this, because the results of this are provided to the board.
Right.
And helping with their consideration of what the decision is. So if somebody had a disagreement that was founded in, in a, for a really good reason, that's something that they can consider and, and either delay a decision, vote against it, vote something different, I guess it would depend on what it is and how the board how they took it. That's the, that's the, that's the purpose of this. That's why one of its, its state law, I mean, we're hap-, I'm happy to do it. Anything to get out of the office is great, but state law requires a public hearing in the town where the project's located, which is, so that's why we're here tonight versus doing this at the courthouse, because they want it to happen in the town where it's going to occur.
Good policy.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So Jeremy, this is a small pilot, and the district, the district has a different way that the pilot impacts their tax cap, but no other agency has. Once we know what our money is, are you able to adjust the pilot over that fifteen years to be a smaller pilot payment and a larger, like, I would like to see an educational benefit versus, I know you have to have it as a pilot, but I'd like to have a small pilot over those fifteen years. I would have, like to have a larger educational benefit so that it doesn't go against my tax cap.
I can tell that's Loretta Fowler talking, but we can't hear the question, so if you can just recap it, Jeremy, when you answer.
I, I can. So the question, Maria, was whether, whether it's possible for a, a project like this to have a smaller actual pilot payment and a, a separate, in the school district's case, educational, educational benefit, I think is how she phrased it. And with that, is that like overall, or is it tapered at the end? So the impact is different at the end?
Well, I'd like to have the smallest, every year I'd like to have a smaller number, like a hundred dollars, and then have like a ten, twelve thousand dollars, because I'm not getting a lot, so. Like, like it sounds like, I think that I can use the, 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 and that funding for the pilot that goes against the tax cap, and then is placed next year, so I never really, I can't really use that much.
Yeah. I, um, that's something that, that I, I need to look at. I don't, just, we, we haven't done that with this, this model we've been using, but there's a ton of models out there, so, and I know this tax, the way the, these pilots can impact school districts at the end of them can be pretty disruptive.
Right, that's why I would like to have an exit plan, because what I'm learning right now is that if you don't have an exit plan that tapers it at the end, that I could actually owe money back to taxpayers, and I, they don't want that, I don't want that. So I feel like if we're doing this to get it started, then we have to have something that ends it so everyone knows how it ends. How we prepare for that.
Thanks.
Given that this is Burke's first one, I'm wondering if while you're researching Loretta's question, find out how it's going to affect our tax levy cap moving forward also, because, you know, it's, you know, I mean, typically, we, we increase about somewhere between five and eight thousand dollars a year. We always try to keep it that, just because it's, you know, I mean, it's, it's hard to go backwards. If, if you don't take advantage of it, you can fall behind quick. You know, I, I, I understand where Loretta's coming from, and I'm wondering if that will affect a town with
I think you can, let me get you a better, rather than me stumbling through it, because I'm not a tax lawyer.
No problem.
I'll get you an answer, but I do know that the school districts are particularly affected for a couple of different reasons, one of which is when you exceed the tax cap, school district needs to have voters approve it,
Right.
which is a different animal than if, than a town board exceeding the tax cap.
We only need three board members to approve it.
And what could happen with a school district that at the end of a pilot, and I don't remember all the reasons for it, is the tax cap could end up being negative, even though the amount that the taxpayers are paying is the same or less, but still requires them to approve it, and it's an incredibly difficult thing to explain to the entire community. Let me get you a better explanation than, to your question.
And I, I was on the Shattagay School Board for fifteen years, so I kind of, I've seen some concerns that what Loretta was talking about in the past, and it's, yeah.
Okay.
But the way they do their budget is a lot more confusing, especially for the tax levy cap.
Yes, it is. Well, yeah, that's a state.
Jackie Cowan showed me the formula before.
We can all talk to the state about that.
It's crazy. It's crazy. You've done this more than I have. What else do we need, what, what question should we be asking you?
We've asked most of them. I mean, that's, to me, the crux of the matter is, is, is making sure I mean, that's, to me, the crux of the matter is, is, is making sure that we provide good information on, on these sheets. So you have a good understanding of what the terms are, you made sure I explained that. And they also understand, and it's all estimated, that you all also understand how the pilot is, is distributed amongst all of the taxing jurisdictions. And if, uh, we all leave with those two understandings, then I'm pretty comfortable. Okay. I mean, what I, I know we're being recorded, but what I, what I was required to read means nothing. It's just a bunch of, it's a legal document.
It's legal mumble jump.
Right? So who cares about that? The, the crux of the matter is-
I see, you say a tax calculation. You've got that. You want to explain that and does that impact the pilot in any way, shape or form?
It's, it's completely separate from the pilot. So it's a separate benefit that the IDA can provide, which is a sales tax exemption. Some, some-
To the developers?
Yeah, some, some items of, that go into a solar project are already taxed, sales tax exempt. But there's a lot of materials and equipment that are not sales tax exempt and the IDA can provide a, an exemption for that. So this second page, uh, takes the overall, looks at the overall project cost and then, uh, calculates what portion of that project cost would be subject to sales tax. And then, uh, we give a percent of what that, we have a, we have an estimate for what that would be. Now, if, if approved, the company tracks all that and there's a bunch of, there's documentation that's provided by us and the state that documents what actual exemption they receive. But so this is an estimate.
Okay. Well, they're farming the sun, they should just get a tax exemption. They don't want to pay those things.
Cause it's a solar farm, right?
That's right.
So that's an, it's an agricultural business, it's a solar farm.
A lot of farmers in this room right now, we know what we're talking about. But anyhow, it's probably a different animal.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Does a developer have any more say on this or is it, it's presented to them and that's it?
Well, they, well, so, um, we've, we've been there, we were there a long time ago. But yes, they, they certainly have what they would like to do. We have what we would like to do. We have a negotiation and we come to terms and if we come to terms, then we go with the next step of the process, which is doing a public hearing and producing this. That's where we're at. So with, with Next Amp, they, and they're, you know, Barton is on, uh, they've been great to work with. This is the fifth project. And so we, when we started this over a year and a half or two years ago, uh, we, we pretty quickly settled on those terms, five, five, five thousand, 5,500 megawatt, 15-year term. So that's been set for a long time now.
Okay. This is the same as what they got in Bangor?
Yes, right, yeah. So the-
They got two in Bangor right now.
Yeah, there's two there. There's two under consideration in Fort Covington, same, same exact, we had the public hearing earlier in Fort Covington, same exact terms.
Is Constable online?
Constable's online, different company online, been online for a couple of years, but same terms.
The one on 122.
Any other questions, comments? I, I appreciate all the questions. I love it. It's great. Better than a room full of zombies, I'd take it any day of the week. Great. All right, so if there's no other questions or comments, it's, uh, 6:37 and we will, I will, uh, call this public hearing adjourned at 6:37 PM. And I really appreciate everyone's, uh, attendance and comments and for hosting us. Everybody online, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremy, appreciate it. Thanks, Bill.